South Wing Lobbies. You may also use the main entrance glass doors, which open toward the flagpole area. If you are in the middle gallery, your primary exit is through the main entrance glass doors, located near the flagpole area. If you are in the second or third floor galleries, in addition to the main door on your level, emergency exits are located at the ends of the seed rows on both the east and west sides. All these exits will lead you to the main hallway stairways, going down to the main entrance and out to the flagpole area. A quick guide. If you are on the south side of the gallery, turn right as you go through the emergency exit. If you are on the north side, turn left. Both will lead you towards the main hallway stairways. If you are seated at the rostrum, your nearest exits are on the north and south sides, leading directly to the rear entrance lobby and out to the helipad area. Finally, if you are unable to leave the plenary hall, do not panic. Essential safety items: a hard hat, whistle, bottled water, and flashlight are readily available under your table for your immediate use. Thank you for your attention. Your safety is our shared responsibility.
The session is called to order. Everybody is required to rise for the singing of the National Anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saang silang anan. Alang ng kuso, sa titik mo'y buhay. Lupang hiniram, buya ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, ti ka pasisilil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit, rokakaw. May hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wata at moy kagumpay na rapihikin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kailan, pa may mangdili. Lupan ang maraw ng war, aming pagsitka. Buoy ay labi sa titik. Aming likaya dapat may mahapin at lamatay ng daing sayo.
Please remain standing for the invocation to be led by Representative Antonino Romandos.
Let us bow our heads. Almighty and ever-living God, we come before you today in humility and gratitude as we resume our work for the Filipino people. After this period of recess and renewal, we gather once more in this August Hall entrusted with the hopes of our nation. We thank you for the strength you have given us, the guidance you have shown, and the opportunity to serve our people. Yet, Lord, we stand here with heavy hearts. In the past weeks, our country faced the wrath of Bagyong Tino and super typhoon Uwan. Lives were lost, homes and livelihoods swept away, entire communities left grieving and rebuilding from the ground up. For every Filipino who mourns, for every farmer who lost his harvest, for every child displaced from home in school, we ask for your comfort, compassion, and healing. Grant also, O Lord, strength to our frontliners, responders, local leaders, and volunteers who labor tirelessly to protect and restore our communities. Bless their hands and fortify their spirits as they continue to work of relief, recovery, and hope. As representatives of our people, we ask that you guide us now more than ever, instilling us a deeper sense of purpose and urgency. Remind us that beyond political persuasion, beyond titles and parties, we are first and foremost servants of the nation. In the face of disaster, hardship, and uncertainty, may we choose unity over division, compassion over pride, and action over hesitation. Help us to build with foresight, legislate with conviction, and lead with heart. Let us craft policies that uplift the vulnerable, strengthen our communities, and fortify our nation's resilience against the storms, both literal and figurative yet to come. Lord, renew in us a spirit of bayanihan. May the work we do in these halls reflect the bravery of our frontliners, the perseverance of our workers, and the hope of every Filipino who still believes in the promise of a better tomorrow. Bless our nation and its leaders. Bless every Filipino family. And bless this Congress that we may always choose service, humility, and love for country above all else. We entrust this session and our nation to your guiding light. Amen.
Amen. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Is there any objection? Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Asidre, Ako, Acosta, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agiau, Alano, Alba, Albano, Almario Chino Miguel, Almario Dennis, Almonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Angelis, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison Munir, Arbison Munir Junior, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Ataiden, Aumentado, Ayon, Bagaw, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Bangoro, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascog, Bautista Claude, Bautista Joan Monique, Bautista Lim, Beltran, Benitez Alfredo, Benitez Javier Miguel, Bernos Ching, Bernos JB, Biron, Bo cobo, Bolilia, Bondok, Briones, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calderon, Calisto, Kawagdan, Kari, Castro, Kaiton, Celeste, Sendanya, Senisa, Chan, Chua, Chuatay, Chungalau, Ko, Ko Pilar, Kowanko Jaime Edward Mark, Kowanko Mark, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Agatha, Cruz Ricardo, Cruzado, Kuwa, Dagook, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Lima, De Venecia, De Fensoar, Degamo, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Di Makuha, Di Magila, Di Maporo Imelda, Di Maporo City Amina, Diokno, Dionisio, Domingo, Domogan, Doterte Harold James, Doterte Omar Vincent, Doterte Paulo, Di Faustino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Elago, Emano, Enverga, Erise, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Perer Antonio, Perer Jeffrey, Flores, Cortez, Frasco, Presnedi, Puentabelia, Galang, Galeios, Garbin, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Karen Hope, Garcia Maria Angela, Gardiola, Garin, Gachalian, Gato, Glepa, Go, Gomez, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Elisa Michaela, Gonzalez Christopher Sheen, Gonzalez Roy, Goriseta, Guiko, Gin tu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hernandez Charisan, Hernandez Dennis, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Ramil, Hofer Hasim, Horibata, Ismula, Iway, Javier, Ko Antonio, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Ko, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagbas, Lagdameyo Jose Manuel, Lagdameyo Monique Yasmin Maria, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Ledesma, Legasyon, Legarda, Legaspi, Leviste, Libanan, Lopez, Gloria, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Makasait, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangudatuh, Manikis, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marquez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Mira Flores, Momo, Montez, Nava, Nazal, Nisai, Nolasco, Oeminal Henry, Oeminal Sancho Fernando, Odokado, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Oreta, Ortega, Owano Dizon, Padernos, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Perez, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Poe, Primicias Agabas, Pomaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Yolo, Ridon, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iolojo, Rodriguez Maximo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romualdes Andrew Julian, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salvacion, Salvador, Salvame, San Fernando, Santos Maria Alana Samantha, Santos Marc Anthony, Shimura, Singson Michelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Bella Vanessa, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Sun Tay, Talyado, Tan Ayman, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Mika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Yodoro, Tereng, Teves, Tianco, Tien, Tinio, Tolentino, Tuán, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Ungab, Uy de Carlo, Uy Roberto, Valeriano, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Villia, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villaferte Vicencio Renato Luigi, Villanueva, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Arthur, Yap Christoffersen, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yap John Gisnel, Yatko, Inares, Yu Jess Jaisal Victoria, Yu Joseph Kim, Yulo, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 218 members responded to the call.
With 218 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of accord. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the Journal Number 16 covering October 13, 2025.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to proceed with the reference of business in a quest that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading: House Bill 5472, Converting Lingayan Pangasinan into Component City to be known as the City of Lingayan by Representative Kau Hongkong Mark.
To the Committee on Local Governance.
House Bill 5473, Declaring the Month of October's National Safe-Sound Month by Representative Yatko.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5474, Authorizing the City or Municipal Civil Registrar and the Council General to exchange the sex and the first name of an intersex person appearing the civil register without the need of a judicial order by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula, and Bagaw.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5475, Increasing the Excise Tax on Alcoholic Beverages by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula, and Bagaw.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5476, Increasing the Excise Tax on premixed alcoholic beverages by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula, and Bagaw.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5477, Regulating the Sale and Packaging of Alcohol Products by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula, and Bagaw.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 5478, Increasing the Excise Tax on Alcoholic Beverages by Representative Amante.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5479, Renewing for another 50 years the franchise granted to Philippine Airlines Inc. by Representative Ortega.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 5480, Authorizing LGUs to undertake the construction, repair, and maintenance of public school buildings by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5481, Establishing the Presidential Scholarship Merit Program Providing Financial Assistance for Higher Education by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 5482, Providing for the Comprehensive Rehabilitation and Upgrading of Existing Resettlement Areas by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 5483, Establishing an Elderly Care and Nursing Center in the Province of Palawan by Representative Legaspi.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 5484, Protecting Vulnerable Sectors Against Radicalization and Terror Grooming by Representative Ako.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5485, Providing Regulatory Framework for Open Harbor Pelletage in the Philippines by Representative Pomaren.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5486, Providing for the Fair Use of Social Media, AI, and Internet Technology for the Holding of Free, Orderly, Honest, Peaceful, and Credible Elections by Representative Ataiden.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 5487, Institutionalizing and Strengthening the National Cyber Security Framework by Representative Ataiden.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5488, Establishing a Voucher System for Poor and Academically Qualified Students of Private Higher Education Institutions and Private Tech Work Institutions by Representative Ataiden.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 5489, Promoting the Adoption of Digital Payments for Financial Transactions of the Government and All Merchants by Representative Ataiden.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 5490, Instituting a National Land Use Policy by Representative Ataiden.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 5491, Converting Various Roads Traversing Certain Municipalities in the Second Legislative District, Province of Davao del Oro, into National Roads by Representative Zenisa.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5492, Providing Hazard Pay and Continuing Education, Specialized Training and Scholarship Programs for Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Officers and Personnel by Representative Zenisa.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 5493, Reorganizing the Women and Children Protection Center of the PNP into the Women and Children Protection Group by Representatives Valeriano, Puno, Lagbas, Veloso Tuazon, Tolentino, Oreta, and Ako.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5494, Amending the Act Punishing Online Sexual Abuse of Exploitation of Children, Penalizing the Production, Distribution, Possession, and Access of Child Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Materials by Representatives Valeriano, Puno, Lagbas, Veloso Tuazon, Tolentino, Oreta, and Ako.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 5495, Establishing in the Island Garden City of Samar, Davao del Norte, the Island Garden City of Samar Hospital by Representative Lagdameyo Jose Manuel.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5496.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the reference of business.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session's... Reference of Business is suspended. Majority Leader?
I move to suspend.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority of Lord Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, our Speaker of the House, Faustino Bogidi III, will now address the body.
Mga kasama kong lingkod bayan, mga kapwa akong kinatawan, at mga kababayan ko. Isang mainit na pagbati sa pagbabalik sa session ng inyong kapulungan ng kinatawan. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Bago ang lahat, muli nating ipinaabot ang ating lubos na pakikiramay sa mga pamilyang labis na naapektuhan ng sunod-sunod na kalamidad sa ating buong bansa. Kasama ninyo kami sa panalangin para sa inyong mabilis na pagbangon. Ang buong Kongreso ay handang makipagtulungan sa inyong mga kinatawan upang magatid ng agarang tulong at sa lahat ng mga pangangailangan. Patuli din tayo makikipagugnayan sa mga ahensya na mga pamahalaan at mga lokal na opisyal upang mayatid ang tulong, mabilis na rehabilitation, at matiyak ang mas matatag na paghahanda sa mga susunod pang sakuna. Sa gitna ng bawat unos, pinapaalala sa atin na ang paglilingkod ay hindi lamang tungkol sa paggawa ng mga batas, kundi sa pagpapakita ng malasakit, sa pagkilos, at pagbibigay ng bagong pag-asa. Naiintindihan ko po na may mga kasama tayo na wala dito ngayon upang tugunan ang pangangailangan ng kanilang mga nasasukupang lugar. Tama lamang po na ipakita natin ang ating dedikasyon sa paglilingkod sa gitna ng panahon ng mga pagsubok. Ngayon, na nakatapos na natin ang unang hakbang at tungkuling maipasa ang pambansang budget, maaari na nating ituon ang ating buong lakas sa paggawa ng iba pang mahalagang batas na magpapatatag sa ating ekonomiya, magpapalakas sa ating mga institusyon, makakatulong sa agarang pagbangon ng mga lugar na nasalanta, at magpapatibay sa tiwala ng ating taong bayan. Ngunit, sa pagbubukas ng bagong yugto ng ating paglilingkod sa bayan, kakailanganin nating harapin ang mga katotohanan. May isang hamon na patuloy na umahadlang sa pagunlad, isang sugat na matagal ng nananatili sa ating lipunan, 'yan ay ang korapsyon. Ito ang kalawang gobyerno na unting-unting, ito ang kalawang ng gobyerno na unti-unting kumakain sa tiwala ng ating mga mamamayan. Ito ang tunay na salarin sa bawat proyektong hindi natatapos, sa bawat serbisyong napako, at sa mga pangakong di natupad. Sa mensahe ng Catholic Bishop Conference of the Philippines nitong mga nakalarang araw, malinaw ang paalala magmuni, magnilay-nilay, at higit sa lahat maging tuwid. Ang mensahe ito ay hamon para sa bawat isa sa atin sa ating pamahalaan na ang tunay na reporma ay hindi nasusukat sa dami ng ating ipinangako kundi sa epekto at visa ng ating sinasagawang programa. Kaya ngayong araw, hayaan punin ninyong ilahad ko ang dalawang konkretong hakbang ng inyong camera para maipakita at maiparamdam natin na seryoso tayong magreforma sa ating hanay. Una, ang Independent Commission Against Infrastructure Corruption, or ICI Bill. Sa harap ng mga ulat ng katiwalaan at ghost projects, hindi sapat ang galit. Kailangan natin ang solusyon. Ang ICI Bill ay makakatulong upang mapanagot ang mga individual na sangkot sa katiwalaan sa fad control projects. Malinaw ang ating mensahe. There will be zero delays in the passage of this measure because our people have zero tolerance for corruption. Kaya malinaw din po ang direktibo natin dito. We will pass this before we adjourn this December. Pangalawa, ang paghahain ng panukalang Anti Dynasty Bill. Panuna na upang harapin ang isa pang usapin na matagal ng nakasaad sa ating konstitusyon ang pagpapatupad ng batas laban sa political dynasty. Alam ko pong maraming magtataas ng kilay sa usaping ito. At aaminin ko rin, alam kong may mga matang nakatuon sa akin. Dahil sa aking pamilya, gaya ng mga marami pang iba, ay mahabang tradis- na meron ng mahabang tradisyon na paglilingkod sa ating bayan. Hindi ko po itinatanggi sapagkat naniniwala ako na ang paglilingkod ay hindi minamana kundi ipinagkakatiwala ng taong bayan. Sa tutuwa lang po, marami po akong pamilya na nasa pwesto, pero may ilan din naman pong natalo sa eleksyon. Sa huli, taon bayan pa rin ang nagpasya kung sino ang gusto nilang mamuno sa kanilang mga lugar. Kaya't samahan punin niyo kung isulong natin ang isang panukalang batas na magbibigay ng malinaw at makatarungang definasyon ng political dynasty. Isang definasyon na tapat ng diwa sa ating saligang batas na nakatuon sa pagpapalakas ng ating demokrasya. Ang layuning ito ay hindi upang hadlangan ang sino man, kundi upang palawakin ang pagkakataon para sa mas maraming Pilipino na makapaglingkod at makibahagi sa pamahalaan. Mga kasama, patunayan po natin. Hindi lamang sasalita kundi sa ating mga gawa, na bukas at handa tayong makinig sa ating mga kababayan. At dahil dito, nagmumula ang tunay na direksyon ng ating pong pamahalaan. Na seryoso tayo sa pagpapatupad ng mga bagong reporma dahil alam nating dito nakasalalay ang tiwala ng ating taong bayan. Dahil ang seryosong pagbabago ang tanging daan tungo sa mas maayos at makatarungan at maunlad na bagong Pilipinas. Habang binubuksan natin ang session na ito, harapin ang tungkulin bilang mga tagapanghalaga ng tiwala. Mga lingkod bayan na handang tumupad sa mga pangakong maglingkod ng tapat, magtrabaho ng buong puso, at magatid ng resulta na tunay na mararamdaman ng ating pong mga mamamayan. Maraming salamat po, at sama-sama tayong talulin natin ang korapsyon. Mabuhay ang ating bansang Pilipinas.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to resume with the reference of business.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. Motion is approved. Majority Leader? The Secretary General is directed to read all House bills and resolutions on first reading.
House Bill 5496, excluding from gross taxable income the medical expenses incurred due to catastrophic illnesses by Representative Lagdameyo Jose Manuel.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5497, mandating all penal institutions with areas suitable for agriculture to implement agricultural livelihood program for prisoners by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5498, providing for the monthly subsidy of indigent persons with disability by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 5499, converting the Benguet National High School Alno Annex in Alno Lanit Trinidad Benguet into the Alno National High School by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5500, providing for the Magna Carta of the out-of-school youth by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 5501, converting the Pico Stock Farm Poges Boyagan Publasion Provincial Road in Latridinad Benguet into a national road by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5502 and 5505, converting certain elementary schools in the Province of Benguet into integrated schools by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5503, protecting senior citizens from violence by Representatives Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 5504, converting the Ampusongan National High School Kayapa Annex in Kayapa Bakun Benguet into Kayapa National High School by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5506, ensuring the access of all Filipinos to the highest attainable standard of health by Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5507, amending the Kabalikat sa Pagtuturo Act by Representative Inares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5508, institutionalizing the community-driven development approach as a national strategy for inclusive growth and social protection by Representative Fortez.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 5509, establishing the Philippine Blood Center by Representative Fortez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5510, declaring October 12 of every year as a special non-working holiday in Prieto Diaz Sorcegon to be known as Prieto Diaz Foundation Day by Representative Fortez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5511, creating mandatory positions for human resource management officer for municipalities, cities, and provinces, and a business permit and licensing officer for municipalities and cities by Representative Fortez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5512, granting the Capi's Electric Cooperative Inc. franchise for the conveyance of electric power to the end users in the City of Rojas and certain municipalities all in the Province of Capi's by Representatives Castro, Dagooc, and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 5513, increasing the employment quota for PWDs in the public and private sectors to 2% by Representative Goriseta.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 5514, establishing PWD centers in all regional tertiary medical centers under the DOH and mandating the field health to cover therapy services and assistive rehabilitation for PWDs by Representative Goriseta.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 5515, strengthening inclusive and special education for PWDs by Representative Goriseta.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 5516, strengthening the National Integrated Cancer Control Program by establishing the National Cancer Medicine Access and Innovation Fund by Representative Co.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5517, mandating the integration of digital literacy education in the basic education curriculum by Representative Co.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5518, reducing the VAT from 12% to 10% by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5519, declaring January 22 of every year as a special working holiday to be known as National Farmers' Day by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 5520, institutionalizing the mandatory grant of a 20% discount privilege to all eligible students on mobile and internet services by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5521, digitizing all books necessary for public education, establishing the Philippine Online Library by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5522, institutionalizing the establishment of late-night learning hubs in all cities in the country to provide safe, sustainable, and accessible public study spaces by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill numbers 5523 to 5529, establishing barangay digital resource centers and e-libraries in certain barangays in the Province of Camarinesur by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5530, integrating voter education into the K-12 curriculum by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5531, establishing a College of Veterinary Medicine at the Western Minado State University in San Buanga City by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5532, providing affordable housing programs for government medical workers by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 5533, strengthening the E-Governance Act of 2025 by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5534, amending the National Health Insurance Act of 2013 to include the provision of sensory, assistive, and rehabilitative services and devices for indigent senior citizens and PWDs by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5535, converting Balor Bypass Road in the Province of Rora into a national road by Representative Angara.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5536, providing for the comprehensive reformation and social reintegration program of senior citizen persons deprived of liberty by Representative Galang.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5537, providing for a Magna Carta of delivery riders and bikers by Representative Galang.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill numbers 5538 to 5540, separating the senior high schools from national high schools in certain barangays in the City of Parenyake into independent national senior high schools by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5541, providing for a 200 daily wage increase for minimum wage workers in the private sector by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 5542, establishing a one-town, one-tourist attraction program to promote tourism and sustainable economic development by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 5543, strengthening the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation by Representative Yap Christopher Son.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 5544, mandating the formulation and institutionalization of a comprehensive infrastructure development master plan by Representative Cruz Agatha.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5545, providing for a comprehensive and responsive civil registration and vital statistics system by Representative Cruz Agatha.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 5546, establishing the Philippine Science Institute under the supervision of the DOST by Representative Ledesma.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 5547, establishing a barangay digital resource center and e-library in Santa Luzia, Magarao, Camarinesur by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5548, creating additional branches of the RTZ Family Court, MTCC, and MTC in the Fifth Judicial Region to be stationed at the Kalabanga and Tili, as well as the City of Naga, Province of Camarinesur by Representative Legazion.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5549, reclassification as agricultural land, a parcel of land of the public domain located in the Zames City, Misamis Occidental, and open to disposition for agricultural, commercial, residential, and industrial purposes by Representatives Owaminal Henry and Owaminal Sancho Fernando.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 5550, providing for the conversion of the LTO Extension Office in Coron Palawan into the LTO District Office of Coron Palawan by Representative Salvame.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5551, granting the Bukidnon Two Electric Cooperative Inc. a franchise for the conveyance of electric power to the end-users in certain municipalities in the province of Bukidnon by Representatives Dacooc and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 5552, modernizing the PCG by introducing policy and organizational reforms and a scholarship program for qualified survivors by Representative Adong.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5553, requiring front-of-package warning labels for prepackaged food products by Representative Cruzado.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5554, to strengthen youth leadership and governance by improving the mandatory and continuing training programs for Stanghunian Kabatahan officials by Representative Cruzado.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5555, providing for income support program for fisherfolks whose livelihood are negatively affected during periods of closed seasons for fishing by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 5556, appropriating the amount of 1 billion pesos for the Council Assistance Fund by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5557, strengthening the Contractors License Law by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 5558, recognizing individual rights over wants, likeness, and identity regulating the creation and use of deepfakes through disclosure consent and platform accountability by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5559, modernizing the regulation of health facilities and services by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5560, instituting the Food and Drug Administration as an independent agency by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5561, declaring the manufacture, importation, distribution, sale, or offer for sale or possession of counterfeit pharmaceutical products as an offense involving economic sabotage by Representative Tan Keith Maika.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5565, expanding the coverage of the National Feeding Program in public schools and public daycare centers by Representative Agarow.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5563, enhancing the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act by Representative Agarow.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5564, amending the Safe Spaces Act by Representative Agarow.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 5565, creating four additional branches of the MTCC in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in General Santos City by Representative Banios Negrales.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5566, declaring the city of General Santos as the tuna capital of the Philippines by Representative Banios Negrales.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 5567, creating the General Santos City District Engineering Office of the DPWH by Representative Banios Negrales.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5568, granting hazard pay to public prosecutors exposed to hazardous situations and performing hazardous duties related to assigned cases by Representative Banios Negrales.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5569, declaring the World War II Japanese bunkers in General Santos City as protected heritage and historical sites by Representative Banios Negrales.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5570, establishing in Hinobaan Negroes Occidental the Negroes Occidental Mathematics and Science High School by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5571, establishing a revenue-sharing scheme for host provinces in revenues generated by the national government from offshore mining and energy operations by Representatives Acosta and Alvarez Jose.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5572, converting the Doctor Eva Makaraig Makapagal National Center for Geriatric Health under the Jose Reyes Memorial Medical Center as the National Center for Geriatric Health and Research Institute by Representatives Tool for Ralph Wendell and Tool for Jocelyn.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5573, increasing the bed capacity of the Southern Philippines Medical Center in Davao City, Davao del Sur, from 1,500 to 2,000 beds by Representatives Zamora Maria Carmen, Almario Chino Miguel, Kagas, Uy, De Carlo, Uy de Carlo, Dayang Hirang, Lagdameyo Jose Manuel, and Siniza.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5574, enhancing the welfare and professional development of special needs education teachers by upgrading their salary grade by Representative Yamsuan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5575, establishing an onsite, in-city, or near-city, or off-city government resettlement program for informal settler families by Representative Yamsuan.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 5576, establishing a national supplier development program to strengthen MSME participation in domestic and global value chains by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Sia de Mari, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 5577, establishing the Classroom Building Acceleration Program by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Sia de Mari, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5578, establishing a national jobs guarantee program to be known as the Bayanihan Work Program by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Sia de Mari, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 5579, granting the President of the Republic of the Philippines emergency powers to expedite the construction, rehabilitation, and repair of classrooms nationwide by Representative Almario Chino Miguel.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Numbers 5580 to 5589, converting avenues and roads and extension in certain areas in Paranyake City into national roads by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5590, establishing a nationwide ban on the production, distribution, sale, and use of single-use plastic products by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5591, establishing in Anggat Bulakan the Anggat Municipal Hospital by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5592, establishing the Philippine Cyber Security Council by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5593, strengthening the people's constitutional right to information on matters of public concern, establishing a framework of access by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 5594, separating the University of Southern Mindanao Kidapawan City Campus located in Kidapawan City, Cotabato, from the University of Southern Mindanao Main Campus located in Kabakan, Cotabato, and converting it into South Central Mindanao State College by Representative Kawagdan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5595, instituting comprehensive policies to prevent and address acts of bullying, harassment, and other forms of violence in the workplace by Representatives Tool for Jocelyn, Tool for Ralph Wendell, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment, and the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 5596, establishing the Classroom Building Acceleration Program by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5597, providing for a five-year validity period of the professional identification cards of all professionals under the PRC by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 5598, further extending the period of availability of the estate tax amnesty until June 30, 2028 by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 5599, providing for a Magna Carta of barangays and barangay officials by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5600, modernizing the Philippine Civil Registration and Vital Statistics System by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 5601, establishing a national electronic health record system to ensure continuity of care, improve medical efficiency, and promote universal health access for all Filipinos by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5602, establishing the Philippine Online Library by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5603, regulating billboards and other out-of-home advertising signs by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5604, establishing a national energy policy and regulatory framework for facilities utilizing waste-to-energy technologies by Representative Yap Arthur.
To the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5605, integrating disaster preparedness and response subject into the curricula of public and private elementary and high schools by Representative Lazatin.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5606, mandating the exclusive rights of small-scale and subsistence fisherfolk within the Philippine kilometer municipal waters by Representatives Kol Rene Luis, Tinio, and Elago.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 5607, ensuring the welfare and protection of BPO workers by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 5608, providing a Magna Carta for esports gamers by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 5609, amending the Fire Code of the Philippines Act of 2008 by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5610, transferring the National Fire Training Institute from the Philippine Public Safety College to the BFP by Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5611, providing for the Magna Carta of the out-of-school youth by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 5612, providing for the establishment of breast care centers in every region nationwide by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5613, creating the Department of Technical Education and Skills Development by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5614, banning the sale of shower curtains made of polyvinyl chloride, more commonly known as PVC in the Philippines by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5615, creating the Department of Disaster Resilience by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5616, creating a Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and the Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5617, promoting research on dystonia by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5618, to provide for a study and for demonstration projects regarding cases of hepatitis C among firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and other emergency response employees by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5619, establishing a maternal and infant health home visitation program by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5620, creating the National Environmental Protection Agency of the Philippines by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Natural Resources and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5621, reducing healthcare costs by requiring tertiary and specialized hospitals to share certain services and equipment by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5622, to require the Secretaries of Health and Labor and Employment to issue regulations to eliminate or minimize the significant risk of needle-stick injury to healthcare workers by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5623, instituting reforms in land administration, creating the Land Administration Authority by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Natural Resources and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5624, establishing the National Measurement Institute of the Philippines by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 5625, establishing the Mercury Exposure Information Program by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5626, separating the regulatory and commercial functions of the Philippine Ports Authority by converting it into Philippine Ports Corporation for development, management, and operation of public ports within its system and transferring the regulatory functions to the marina by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5627, reorganizing the Land Registration Authority by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 5628, establishing the Philippine Transportation Safety Board by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5629, requiring all public health centers to be open at all times to provide continuous health and medical services to the public by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5630, establishing the Health, the Special Health Fund for the Improvement of Healthcare Services in the LGUs by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5631, establishing the Air Passenger Bill of Rights by Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5632, providing for the restoration and rehabilitation of the Major Ferdinand Edrolyn Marcos Emergency Hospital by Representative Chung Galao.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5633, improving the benefits for athletes with disabilities by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 5634, empowering legislators to look into bank accounts during investigations in aid of legislation on matters involving bribery, plunder, graft, and corruption, terrorism, or issues of significance that affect national security by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 5635, increasing the duration of penalties in the Revised Penal Code by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 5636, improving the comlet by increasing the manpower complement of its field offices by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reform.
House Bill 5637, allowing the use of waste-to-energy technology in electricity, fuel, and heat generation by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5638, strengthening the University of Antike by Representative Ligarda.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5639, establishing a regulatory framework for facilities utilizing waste-to-energy technologies by Representative Ligarda.
To the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5640, strengthening the Philippine Economic Zone Authority by Representative Ligarda.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 5641, expanding the National Feeding Program by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramon Jolo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5642, defining electronic violence against women and their children by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramon Jolo.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 5643, institutionalizing the Emergency Medical Services Team by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramon Jolo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5644, regulating the treatment technology for municipal and hazardous wastes by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramon Jolo.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5645, institutionalizing the Value Added Tax Social Transfer for Indigent Citizens Program by Representatives Duterte Omar Vincent and Duterte Paulo.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 5646, establishing an additional schools division for the 3rd and 4th Congressional Districts of the Province of Quezon to be known as the Quezon Schools Division 2 by Representatives Tan Keith Maika, Montez, and Verga and Arrogancia.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5647, exempting government officials and employees from the prohibition against disclosure of or inquiry into deposits with any banking institution by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 5648, expanding the coverage of the senior citizens privileges and benefits by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 5649, establishing the Philippine Geriatric Center under the DOH by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5650, enhancing the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5651, integrating voter education in the junior and senior high school curricula by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5652, institutionalizing the Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation Program of the DSWD by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 5653, implementing the people's right to information and the constitutional policies of full public disclosure and honesty in the public service by Representative Montez. of full public disclosure and honesty in the public service by representative Montez.
The Committee on Public Information.
House Bill five six five four increasing the bed capacity and providing additional resources with the continued operation of the Jose R Reyes Memorial Medical Center and maximizing its functionality as a specialized geriatric hospital by recognizing the National Center for Geriatric Health as its dedicated department for Filipino citizens by representative Aquino Magsay Say.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill numbers five six five five to five six five eight subdividing certain barangays in the province of Bulakan into distinct and separate barangays by representative Plato.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill five six five nine establishing the Pantawid Para Sa Pilipinong Magbubukid Program by representative Premisas Agabas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill five six six zero promoting environmental responsibility to through the implementation of the claygo practices in all food establishments in the Philippines by representative Premisas Agabas.
The Committee on Ecology.
House Bill five six six one honoring Filipino sports heroes for granting them the privilege of interment at the libinga ng mga bayani by representative Premisas Agabas.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill five six six two declaring the month of November as buwan ng magbubukid at mangingisda and the fifteenth day of May as pambansang araw ng mga magbubukid by representative Premisas Agabas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill five six six four to provide for a livestock poultry and dairy competitiveness enhancement fund by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill five six six five regulating the licensure examination and practice of physical therapy in the Philippines by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill five six 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 providing for development and modernization fund for the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill five six six seven establishing tricycle driver training and motorist awareness programs by representative Vargas.
Is that, oh, the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill five six six eight establishing regulatory framework for the aquarium aquatic life trade and industry by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill five six six nine providing for free freight services in the transportation of relief goods to calamity-stricken areas by representative Lakson.
The Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill five six seven zero establishing a grant program to provide comprehensive eye examinations to children by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill five six seven one upgrading the position of sanitation inspector to the next higher salary grade by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill five six seven two establishing a green public procurement program for all branches of government by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Sustainable Development Goals.
House Bill five six seven three establishing OFW wards to be known as the Bagong Bayani Ward in every government hospital by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill five six seven four providing for the fair and equitable allocation of farm-to-market roads projects of the Department of Agriculture by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill five six seven five regulating the use of treatment technology for municipal and hazardous wastes by representative Escudero.
The Committee on Ecology.
House Bill five six seven six establishing the Presidential Merit Scholarship Program by representative Escudero.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill five six seven seven amending section seven of the Act regulating the sale, manufacture, distribution and use of firecrackers and other pyrotechnic devices by representative Plato.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill five six seven eight instituting fair wages on a national and industrial basis by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill five six seven nine establishing the National Center for Cooperative Development in the Polytechnic University of the Philippines by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill five six eight zero providing for the magna carta of private health workers by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill five six eight one strengthening the National Nutrition Program by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill five six eight two strengthening the rule of parents' associations and creating the National Parent Council by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill five six eight three requiring the teaching of basic road safety and comprehensive drivers' education as part of the curriculum of the K to twelve program by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill five six eight four promoting the right to repair digital electronic products by representative Vargas.
The Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill five six eight five mandating the establishment of rape crisis centers in private hospitals by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
Resolutions House Resolution three six seven directing the Committee on Health and the Committee on Women and Gender Equality to jointly conduct an inquiry on the implementation gaps of existing policies on menstrual health by representatives Elago, Tino and Correne Luis.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three six eight requesting the DEP Ed to postpone face-to-face classes and shift to alternative modes of learning such as modules and online classes for a period of at least two weeks in all public schools nationwide to give time for the formulation of guidelines on disaster and emergency preparedness and response in public schools by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution three six nine urging the House to mandate that department secretaries be personally present to answer questions on their respective agency budgets in the course of the defense by the Committee on Appropriations during budget deliberations in the plenary in order to promote transparency, accountability and efficient legislative deliberations by representative Gomez.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution three seven zero urging the Committee on Labor and Employment to conduct an inquiry on the occupational safety of Pinoy workers during emergency situations by representative Legaspi.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three seven one urging the DAR and concerned government agencies to fast-track distribution, installation, personalization and issuance of land titles to agrarian reform beneficiaries in Ormok City and the fourth district of Leta by representative Gomez.
The Committee on Agrarian Reform.
House Resolution three seven three urging the House with the Committees on Agriculture and Food, Trade and Industry and Labor and Employment and other appropriate committees to conduct an inquiry into the plunge in the milgate price of locally produced sugar in Negros Occidental and its adverse economic impacts on sugar producers and laborers by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three seven four urging all LGs through the DILG, DEP Ed, Shed and Testa to immediately conduct structural safety inspections of all school buildings and facilities in their jurisdiction for a period of two weeks and revert to alternative delivery modalities in all levels of education both public and private by representative Asistio.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution three seven five urging a comprehensive review of the spectrum user fee collection and utilization framework by representative Po.
The Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Resolution three seven six strongly condemning the assassination of Niro Kyle D. Antatiko urging the PNP to conduct an urgent and thorough investigation for the swift prosecution and prosecution of the perpetrators and expeditious administration of justice by representatives Suwan and Emano.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Resolution three seven seven congratulating and commending Honorable Jesus Christine Boeing Remulia on his appointment as Ombudsman of the Republic of the Philippines by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three seven eight congratulating and commending the USD at the Neo de Manila University, UP de la Sal University, Mapua University and Mindanao State University Iligan Institute of Technology for retaining their rankings in the twenty twenty six times higher education world university rankings and for bringing honor and recognition to Philippine higher education by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution three seven nine congratulating and commending Filipino Olympian El Rin Ando for winning the bronze medal in the women's sixty-three kilogram event at the twenty twenty-five IWF World Championships in Ford, Norway and for bringing honor, pride and inspiration to the Filipino people by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution three eight zero recognizing Sudoq One as a locally developed combative sport of national significance in the Philippines and endorsing it to the relevant sports-related entities for their support by representatives Correne Luis, Tino and Elago.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution three eight one congratulating Aries Russell Taigalang for being recognized as one of the outstanding Filipino educators in the United Arab Emirates for twenty twenty-five by the Filipino International Teacher Society by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution three eight two directing the appropriate committee of the House of Representatives to conduct an inquiry on the killing of Kyle Antatiko, a national irrigation administration whistleblower and for the protection of whistleblowers in government by representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three eight three directing the Committee on Labor and Employment to conduct an inquiry on the working conditions of delivery riders of food banned in Philippines in Cagayan de Oro City by representative Suwan.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three eight four urging the Joint Congressional Oversight Committee on Universal Healthcare to immediately convene and conduct a review and evaluation of the implementation of the Universal Healthcare Act specifically section eighteen B on the shift to paying providers based on disease or diagnosis-related groupings by representative Roman.
The Committee on Health.
House Resolution three eight five congratulating Emma Mary Tiglao for winning the Miss Grant International and for making history as the competition's first back-to-back winner by representative Gonzalez Alisa Micaela.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three eight six urging the DTI and the DFA to immediately undertake diplomatic and trade engagements with the government of the United States of America to address the adverse impacts of the Keep Paul Centers in America Act of twenty twenty-five and to safeguard the continued operation of US-affiliated BPO firms in the Philippines by representative Frasco.
The Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Resolution three eight seven expressing profound condolences of the House to the family of the late former Paranyake City Councilor Pablo Gabriel Junior by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three eight eight expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Honorable Eduardo Ramos Urmida, former executive secretary, distinguished soldier, a statesman and peacemaker and commending his exemplary service and lasting contributions to the nation by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three eight nine congratulating and commending Christine Eds Enero, a proud Olivarian and Paranyakena from Barangay San Junisio for winning the title of Miss Tourism Tourism Queen of the Year International twenty twenty-five held in Malaysia, bringing honor and pride to the country, the city of Paranyake and Olivares College by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine zero congratulating and commending Emma Mary Tiglao for winning the Miss Grant International twenty twenty-five pageant by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine one urging the Committee on Public Accounts to conduct inquiry into the operations, regulation and compliance with standards of senior citizens' care facilities home for the aged and related institutions by representative Ordanes.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine two urging the Committee on Public Accounts to conduct an inquiry into the status, fund utilization and operations of super health centers nationwide by representative Ordanes.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine three expressing the profound sympathy and condolences of the House on the passing of former Bataan First District Representative and former SBMA Chairman and Administrator Felicito C. Payumo by representative Olivares.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine four congratulating and commending the Clark Development Corporation for the Clark Three-Part Zones recognition as Asia's leading meetings and conference destination during the thirty-second World Travel Awards for Asia and Oceania held at the Intercontinental Grand Stanford in Hong Kong by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Tourism.
House Resolution three nine five extending warm greetings to Brother Eduardo V. Manalo, Executive Minister of the Iglesia Ni Cristo on the occasion of his seventieth birthday and in recognition of his exemplary and effective leadership by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine six resolution congratulating Emma Mary Eftiglao for winning the Miss Grant International twenty twenty-five title by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine seven commending and congratulating eight Filipino designers and brands Andrea Tetanko, Chris Nick de La Strias aka Chris Nick, Don't Blame the Kids Apparel Company, Inokalusa aka Victor, Inigo Villiegas aka Inigo, Oxygen, Archig Santos aka Randolph, and Vinyon Romero for representing Filipino creativity and excellence in Manila Fashion Week twenty twenty-five held from October sixteen to nineteen twenty twenty-five as S- at SM Aura premiere in Taguig City by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution three nine eight congratulating and commending Emma Mary Francisco Tiglao of Mabalakat, Pampanga for being crowned Miss Grant International twenty twenty-five by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution three nine nine commending and congratulating Filipino actor John Lloyd Cruz for winning the Bokalino de Oro or Golden Jug Award for Best Actor at the seventy-sixth Locarno Film Festival by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution, House Resolution four zero zero commending and congratulating Filipino artist Pio Abad for being a finalist at the prestigious Turner Prize twenty twenty-four by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero one commending and congratulating Filipino chefs Jordi Navara, Stefan Ducazme, Shell Gonzalez and Johann C. for winning various awards at the Best Chefs Award twenty twenty-four held in United Arab Emirates by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero two commending and congratulating Filipino transwoman fashion designer BJ Floresca for being honored to the country as the winner of Project Runway Season Twenty One by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero three commending and congratulating Filipino-American singer Jessica Sanchez for winning the championship in the twentieth season of America's Got Talent by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero four resolution commending and congratulating the Pinoy pop group Beanie for winning the Best Asia Act Award at the twenty twenty-four MTV Europe Music Awards by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero five commending and congratulating the Pinoy pop groups BGYO, Beanie and SB Nineteen for winning various awards at the BRIC Tudo Awards twenty twenty-four held in Brazil by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero six commending the Manila Fame Trade Show for its significant contribution to the growth and development of the Philippine export industry by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution four zero seven directing the appropriate committee of the House to conduct an inquiry on the measures needed to strengthen support for film producers to ensure the continued development of the Philippine film industry by representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution four zero eight congratulating and commending the people of the province of Sorsugon for achieving the Guinness World Record for the largest nut brittle in the world by representative Escudero.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Resolution four zero nine directing the House Committees on Overseas Workers Affairs and Labor and Employment to jointly conduct a review on the implementation of the magna carta of Filipino seafarers on the provisions that undermine the rights and welfare of Filipino seafarers by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution four one zero directing the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to conduct an investigation in the CHED Manual of Regulations for private higher education following reports of unjust termination of academic teaching professionals by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution four one one calling for an inquiry into the weaponization of the Cybercrime Prevention Act of twenty twelve, particularly the criminalization of cyber libel as a means to suppress dissent, curtail freedom of expression by representative San Fernando.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution four one two congratulating the Angeles City Science High School Research Team for winning the Gold Award at the Science Castle Asia twenty twenty-five held at the Multimedia University Malaysia by representative Lazatin.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Communications letter dated October fourteen twenty twenty-five of the Bank Officer Six PSP Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House truly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated September twenty-nine twenty twenty-five of the Honorable Executive Secretary, Office of the President transmitting two original copies of RA number one-two-three-zero-nine which laps into law granting free funeral services to poor families.
To the Archives.
Letter dated October twenty-seven twenty twenty-five of the Honorable Executive Secretary, Office of the President transmitting two original copies each of the following Republic Acts which were signed by the President. RA number one-two-three-one-two and Tai Pogo Act of twenty twenty-five. RA number one-two-three-one-three, the Lifelong Learning Development Framework Act.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports Committee Report number eleven submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Bill five-six-six-three Committee Report number twelve submitted by the Committee on Housing and Urban Development on House Bill two-two-eight-six and Committee Report number thirteen submitted by the Committee on Labor and Employment on House Resolution four-two-six.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Layla de Lima, Representative Mamayang Liberal Partilis, the following representatives from the Community Organizers Multiversity, Urban Poor Associates and Koalisyon ng Organisadong Samahan ng Maralitang Tagalog Sud. Community Organizers Multiversity namely Tony Lopez, Madeline Suarez, Vicente Barlos, Elisa Maceda, Ram Babas, Malu Alves Mendoza, Eni Lianyo, Brian Teodosio, Virginia Ramos, Jessica Amon, Marlon Kirante, Belia de la Rosa, Urban Poor Associates namely Alicia Murphy, Ivy Pagute, Lucila, Sugeste, Grisly Hortinella, Robertus Mulhaddie and Koalisyon ng Organisadong Samahan and Koalisiyon ng Organisadong Samahan ng Maralitang Tagalog Sud, namely Gemma Quintero, Filomena Cinco, Georgie Tinolete, Cynthia Espiga, and last Jerome Usario. Mr. Speaker.
To the guests of the Honorable Lila de Lima, coming from the Community Organizers Multiversity, from the Urban Poor Associates, and from the Koalisiyon ng Organisadong Samahan ng Maralitang Tagalog Sud, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to recognize the guests at the Committee on Welfare of Children, namely from the United Nations Office of the Special Representative of the Secretary-General on Violence Against Children, Dr. Najat Maala Mujid, Special Representative of the Secretary-General on VAC, and Mr. Manus DeBarra, Child Protection Officer, from the United Nations Children's Fund, Bezad Nobari, Deputy Representative, Patricia Lim Aken, Chief Child Protection, and Fay Balanon, Child Protection Officer. And from the Child Rights Network, Ms. Aurora Kilala, Executive Director, and Ms. Ninita Dalde, Deputy Executive Director.
To the guests from the United Nations Office of the Special Representative of the Secretary-General on Violence Against Children, Dr. Najat Maala, Special Representative of the Secretary-General on VAC, Mr. Manus DeBarra, Child Protection Officer, and from the United Nations Children's Fund, or UNICEF, we have Bezad Nobari, Deputy Representative, Patricia Lim Aken, Chief of Chief Child Protection, and Fay Balanon, Child Protection Officer. And finally, from the Child Rights Network, Ms. Maria Aurora Kilala, Executive Director, and Ms. Ninita Dalde, Deputy Executive Director. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would also like to recognize the guests of Representative Elijah R. San Fernando of the Kamanggagawa Partilis, from the Light Rail Manila Corporation Supervisory Union, namely Joselito El Santa, Sherwin Salles, Jessie P. Mariano, Lowell P. Madla, Darina P. Lumbriz, and Jordan Brozo.
To the guests of the Honorable Elijah San Fernando from the Light Rail Manila Corporation Supervisory, led by Mr. Joselito Santa, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we would also like to recognize the guests of Honorable Edwin L. Cruzado, Representative of the First District of Cotabato, namely Honorable Ryan Tabanay, Vice Mayor, Municipality of Makilala, Cotabato Province, Ms. Sheryl U. Amoy, Mr. Mark June Antipuesto, Ms. Edsel Bitalas, Mr. Nathaniel Ponol, Mr. Andy Figura, Mr. Lucky Rogin, Flores, Mr. Elmer Garganian, Ms. Melanie Iremedio, Mr. Kevin Roy Necesito, Mr. Kyle Rusman Pacres, Ms. LV Pagong, Mr. Ray Ramirez, and Ms. Paula Julian Ruiz.
To the guests of Honorable Cruzado and Honorable Kawagdan, led by Honorable Ryan Tabanay, Vice Mayor of the Municipality of Makilala, Cotabato Province, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker would leave of the House. I move to open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The privilege hour is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Representative Lila M. de Lima of the Partilis ML to avail of the privilege hour.
Representative, the Honorable Lila M. de Lima of Partilis ML is recognized. You may proceed. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I rise today on a matter of collective privilege to call the attention of the August Chamber to a grave and deeply troubling provision in a law enacted by the 19th Congress, Republic Act Number 12216 or the National Housing Authority Act. Under Section 6, Subsection 4D of this law, the National Housing Authority, or NHA, the very agency mandated to build homes for the low-income families has been given the power to summarily eject and dismantle without the necessity of judicial order. May I repeat that? Without the necessity of judicial order, informal settler families, or so-called illegal occupants residing in government resettlement projects and properties under its administration. Mr. Speaker, let that sink in. Congress has empowered the National Housing Agency to render our people homeless. How can an instrumentality of government, a public corporation founded by people's money, whose mandate is to shelter, be given the legal authority to dispossess? How can we justify a law that gives the NHA the power to demolish without judicial process when due process itself is the cornerstone of our judicial system? Napakaraming mali sa probisyong ito ng NHA Act. Let us look closely at the text of this provision. The clause granting the NHA this summary and extrajudicial authority to evict and demolish is not a standalone section. It is a mere proviso talked quietly within Section 6, Subsection 4D, a paragraph that principally deals with the collection of debts and obligation. Malinaw, first, it is an obvious rider. Tingnan punaten how Section 6, Subsection 4D of RA 12216 looks like. And tingnan honaten sa dulo. "The authority may compromise or release in whole or in part any interest, penalty, or obligation in connection with the collection of amortizations from its awardees, provided that the authority shall have the power to summarily eject and dismantle without the necessity of judicial order any and all informal settlers, settler families, as well as any illegal occupant in any home lot, apartment, or dwelling unit from government resettlement projects, as well as properties owned or administered by it." End of quote. Malinaw na malinaw na itong probisyong nagbibigay ng kapangyarihan sa NHA na magpalayas at magpagiba ay naligaw lamang at walang anumang kinalaman sa punto ng Section 6, Subsection 4D. Ang tunay na puntirya lamang ay ang responsibilidad ng NHA na kolektahin ang utang o obligasyon mula sa mga awardees nito. Bahagi ito ng kanyang asset management and business development. Sinasabi sa unang talata ng Subsection 4D na may karapatang maningil at magkaso kung hindi uobra ang paniningil. Sa pangalawang talata naman, ah, bilang pagpapatuloy ng unang talata ay may opsyon na makipagareglo o magpaabuya sa anumang interes, multa, o singilin sa hulugan. Ang parehong talatan sa makatuwid ay tungkol sa pangungulekta ng NHA ng utang at anumang interes o multa. Lahat ito ay sumasailalim sa aspeto ng operasyon ng NHA patungkol sa pamamahalan ng kanyang ari-arian at pagpapalago ng negosyo. What kind of asset management includes the forced eviction of the poor? What kind of business development finds logic in the destruction of homes? Malinaw na malinaw ang probisyong ito. Wala sa lugar, wala sa konteksto, at wala sa katwiran. This insertion is plainly misplaced, a rider clause that has strayed from its proper context. If the raison d'etre of Subsection 4D is debt collection, then eviction and demolition have no rhyme, reason, or rightful place in it. The second point, Mr. Speaker, is that this provision appears to be a product of inadvertence, a legislative slip. It appears that a controversial proviso was just inadvertently retained in the enrolled bill and unfortunately escaped legal scrubbing as the legislative history of RA 12216 seems to suggest. The proviso was not part of any of the counterpart bills in the House of Representatives, specifically HB Numbers 954, 1429, 2300, 6369, 8156, 8578, and 9258. HB 10172, that consolidated and substituted those bills, which was prepared by the House Committee on Housing and Urban Development and eventually passed on third reading, did not contain that questionable clause. In the House's version, the proviso that is logically added to the NHA's prerogative to compromise or release interest, penalty, or any liability pertains to the deputation of a member of the NHA legal staff to act as a special sheriff in foreclosure, sales, attachments, or sub debtors' properties, et cetera. It is therefore illogical and out of place to insert the controversial proviso, giving the NHA extrajudicial and summary power not to even collect the debts and incidental obligations, but to order the eviction of occupants, presumably informal settlers, and the demolition of their homes. HB 10124 was approved on third reading in plenary on May 15, 2024. So 'yan po 'yung history ng batas na ito. It was transmitted to the Senate on May 20. On September 11, the Senate Committees on Urban Planning, Housing and Resettlement, Government Corporations and Public Enterprises, Ways and Means, and Finance jointly filed SB Number 2818 in substitution of SB Number 653, 1258, and 1713, taking into consideration House Bill Number 10170. On February 3, 2025, the Senate approved the substitute bill on third reading. On the same day, in lieu of a BiCam version, the House of Representatives adopted SB Number 2818 en toto as an amendment to its own HB 10172. SB 2818 contained the controversial provision granting the NHA the power to extrajudicially and summarily evict and demolish. It appears that the third reading approval of SB 2818 by the Senate and the House adoption of it on the same day seemed to be done in haste as the last session before Congress took a break would happen just two days later, on February 5. Of course, we know that six days later, or on February 11, the 90-day campaign period for senatorial and party list candidates would begin. And so while everyone was busy campaigning, the enrolled bill was received by the House Secretariat on March 24, 2025, while the Senate received its copy on March 27. It was submitted on April 29 to the President, who signed it into law as RA 12216 on May 29, 2025. From this timeline, we can reasonably infer that the President and both Houses of Congress were very much conscious of four important dates. February 5, the last day of congressional session, which was six days before the kickoff of the campaign period for the May 2025 elections. June 11, 2025, the last day of the 19th Congress. June 30, the start of the 28th Congress. End July 31, the end of the 50-year life of the NHA pursuant to PD 757. SB 2819 unfortunately contains a similarly worded provision that is carried over into RA 12216. In the rush to meet legislative dock deadlines, coupled with the election campaign frenzy, what was once a well-intentioned bill to extend the life of and strengthen the NHA has turned into a law with a provision that perhaps unintentionally authorizes injustice. This is not mere semantics or oversight. This is a case where a technical lapse translates into innumerable anxieties and incalculable sufferings for many of our poor Filipino households where a misplaced proviso could mean the loss of homes, communities, and dignity for thousands of low-income families. Indeed, Mr. Speaker, this is a slippage in legislative craftsmanship, one with sorry and grave consequences to the poor and other vulnerable groups. Alam ko po, I have very limited time. Ay alam po, if I may be given the, um, the indulgence, the privilege to, uh, for a few minutes more, because these are very substantive arguments that I'm putting forward to convince the body to amend the law by removing, repealing that particular questionable provision.
You have five more minutes, Honorable De Lima.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Third point, Mr. Speaker. Let us now return to the very heart of the NHA's mandate. Ang pinaka-mandato po ng NHA, it exists to develop and implement a comprehensive, integrated, and affordable housing program for underprivileged and homeless citizens. The new law even expands this mission, taking the NHA to build sustainable, resilient, and affordable communities and to provide innovative and alternative solutions for informal settler families and low-income households. Hindi bang ibig sabihin nito ay nakaatas sa NHA sa kanyang kasalukuyang charter? Na hindi lamang magpanukala at magpatupad ng komprehensibong programa sa pabahay, kundi tiyakin ang kanyang programa ay abot kaya at nagbibigay ng mga maparaan at alternatibong opsyon para sa ating mga informal settlers at iba pang mga kapos ang kita. Kung gayon, hindi tama at hindi ang kop ng NHA ang ahensyang dapat naglalaan ng disente at abot kayang pabahay ang siya mismong magpapalayas sa mga kapuspalad at nagpapagipa sa tirahan ng mahihirap nating kababayan na umaasa sa programang pabahay ng ating pamahalaan. Hindi pa kabalin tunaan ito. The very agency meant to uplift the poor is now armed with the authority to dispossess them extrajudicially. This is not just inconsistent, it is contradictory, a distortion of the NHA's reason for being. By analogy, kung ganito ang kalalabasan na ang National Housing Authority ay ahensyang mismong nagkakait ng pabahay, ay para na rin sinasabi na ang Commission on Human Rights ay tagalabag ng karapatang pantao, ang DOJ ay instrumento in hustisia, at ang DNR ay tagawasak ng ating kalikasan. Fourth point. It is inconsistent with UDA. Kasi po, sa UDA, Section 28, sa tatlong kondisyon lamang pwedeng meron eviction. Number one, when occupants are living in danger zones. Number two, when a government infrastructure project with available funding is about to be implemented, or when there is a court order authorizing eviction. Itong bagong batas na ito, 12216, makes no express repeal of UDA. Yet it effectively renders judicial oversight optional. How can we reconcile a law that requires judicial process with one that allows summary action? That two cannot stand together without one undermining the other. Fifth point, violation po ito on constitutional and international obligations. Because of lack of time, I don't have to discuss those constitutional and international obligations. Panghuli na lang po. As conclusion, a call to rectify and repeal. Mr. Speaker and dear colleagues, beyond the legal arguments lies the moral question. What kind of republic empowers its housing agency to act without the courts? To demolish without hearing? To evict without recourse? We cannot in good conscience call ourselves defenders of the marginalized if we allow this power to stand. Kung ako po ay consistent sa pagiging anti-EJK, ako rin ngayon po ay anti-EJed, or anti-extrajudicial judicial eviction or demolition. Mariin tayong tumututol sa extrajudicial eviction and demolition ng NHA. At anumang forma at anyo ng pwersaan at hindi makatarungang pagpapalayas sa at pagigiba na mga tahanan, lalo pa kung ito'y sa mismong mga proyektong pabahay ng pamahalaan. EJK and EJED are both forms of violence, both disregard the due process of law, both trample on human dignity. Tandaan natin, ang paninirahan ay isang batayang karapatan ng lahat. Batayan ito sapagat nagbibigay at nag-aangat ito ng dignidad at halaga sa bawat isa at sa kanyang pamilya. Kung ito ay pwersahan at walang katwirang aalisin sa kanya, hindi lamang na mawawalan siya ng bubong, na masisilungan, at bahay na mauuwi-an. Siya rin ay magiging vulnerable sa napakarami pang paglabag sa ibang karapatan gaya ng buhay at personal na seguridad, gayun din ang access sa kalusugan, edukasyon, at ibipangserbisyon panlipunan. For all these reasons, I reiterate, Mr. Speaker, because this provision is misplaced, inadvertent, inconsistent with the NHA's mandate, repugnant to UDAH or Republic Act 7279, violative of constitutional guarantees, and contrary to our international obligations, I call upon this House to act. Let us move swiftly to repeal Section 6, Subsection 4D of the National Housing Authority Act. Let us correct this legislative misstep before it breeds further injustice. And while we work towards its repeal, I humbly urge the NHA, do not exercise this power, do not implement what the law in its spirit and intent never meant to grant. Mr. Speaker, the NHA must live to its name, the National Housing Authority, not the National Homelessness Authority. Paraming salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable De Lima. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Lila M. De Lima, the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable De Lima is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Representative Anne Matibag of the First District of Laguna to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Anne Matibag of the First District of Laguna is recognized. You may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, good afternoon. As Vice Chair of the Committee on the Welfare of Children, I rise today in celebration of National Children's Month, carrying a message that concerns not only our children's present, but also the very health and future of our nation. We face a growing and silent epidemic, childhood overweight and obesity. According to Department of Science and Technology Food and Nutrition Research Institute, one in 10 Filipino children aged 5 to 19 years is now overweight or obese. If we do nothing, the number will triple by 2030, and obesity in children tells us that the rates are rising fastest among children in urban and wealthier homes, where diets are dominated by highly processed foods and sugary drinks. This means that even in a country long burdened by undernutrition, overnutrition has become a new form of malnutrition. Our children's diets are changing. They are eating less fruits and vegetables and more sugary, salty, and fatty foods. UNICEF reports that three out of four adolescentsans eat fewer than three portions of vegetables a day, while one in three drinks at least one carbonated drink daily. Many Filipino children are going up with instant noodles for breakfast and soft drinks for lunch, not because they want to, but because our food environment has made these the easiest choices. Mr. Speaker, our children live in food environments that fail them. The 2025 UNICEF Child Nutrition Report, Feeding Prophet, revealed that across the world, children are surrounded by cheap, accessible, and aggressively marketed ultra-processed foods. And here in the Philippines, these products are everywhere, in schools, in corner stores, and more dangerously on their phones. Colleagues, our children's playgrounds are no longer just the streets or schoolyards, they are online. According to UNICEF's 2024 Report on Digital Marketing on Unhealthy Foods, three out of four young children said they saw ads for sugary drinks, snacks, or fast food in a week. These ads use cartoon characters, online influencers, games, and even educational apps, designed to capture children's attention, shape their taste, and build brand loyalty before they can even read a food label. This is not just marketing, it is manipulation. The cost of this crisis is enormous in health, education, and the economy. Overweight children are more likely to develop diabetes, heart disease, and depression later in life. Families bear the emotional toll, and our health system bears the financial burden. But the greatest loss is this: every child who grew up malnourished, whether underfed or overfed, is a child whose potential we have failed to nurture. The United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child to which the Philippines is a proud signatory guarantees every child the right to the highest attainable standard of health. Yet, we allow the aggressive marketing of unhealthy food to continue unchecked? We violate that very right. Our children are not miniature consumers, they are citizens with rights. And it is our duty to protect them from exploitation in every form, including commercial exploitation. This is why we should enact a measure that will protect our children from unhealthy food environment, which will restrict child-directed marketing on healthy food and beverages across all media platforms, ban marketing in schools and child-centered spaces, require truthful front-of-pack nutrition labels based on WHO standards, empower regulatory bodies to monitor compliance, and impose penalties for violation. This bill is not anti-business, it is pro-child. It seeks not to punish industry, but to ensure that profit never comes before protection. No country has yet enacted a comprehensive set of measures to protect children from unhealthy food environments, but some are leading the way. Chile, Mexico, and Brazil have shown that with strong laws, children's exposure to unhealthy foods, food ads can be dramatically reduced. Let us make the Philippines part of that global movement. Let us act now, before another generation grows up in an environment that profits from ill health. Mr. Speaker, distinguished guests, our colleagues, this Children's Month, let us reaffirm our commitment to build a nation where every child can grow up healthy, protected, and free from manipulation. Let us be the Congress that stood up not only against abuse or neglect, but against the silent exploitation of our children's health. Together, let us pass this measure. Let us give our children the gift they truly deserve: a healthy start, a fair chance, and a brighter future. Thank you, and may God bless our Filipino children at ate ng magandang bukas.
Thank you, Honorable Matibag. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Anne Matibag of the First District of Laguna to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of the Honorable Anne Matibag is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now recognize Representative Renee Louise Coe of the Kabataan Party List to avail of the privilege.
The Honorable Renee Louise M. Coe of the Party List Kabataan is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa ko mambabatas, isang maulan na resumption of session sa ating lahat. Ngayong buwan, alinsunod sa Republic Act Number 9512, ginuganitan natin ngayon ang National Environmental Awareness Month. Unfortunately, ironic as it is, naging very aware talaga tayo sa environment natin nitong mga nakaraang araw ng Nobyembre, dahil sa pagragasa ng magkasunod na Bagyong Tino at Uwan. Sinalanta ng Bagyong Tino ang Western at Central Visayas, kung saan hindi bababa sa 224 ang namatay, 526 ang sugatan o napilayan, at 109 ang nawawala. Ang pinsala naman sa agrikultura at infrastruktura ay hindi bababa sa 219 million pesos, na kung tutuusin ay conservative estimate pa. Samantala, winasak ng Super Typhoon Uwan ang ibat-ibang bahagi ng Pilipinas mula sa Bicol Region hanggang sa Northern and Central Luzon. As of today, ang inisyal na mga tala, eight fatalities, 15 injured, at million-million ang displaced o nakabakwit. At sa ngayon, wala pa rin ang bilang kung magkano ang total loss and damage na dulot ng Super Typhoon. Mr. Speaker, habang umaapaw ang baha sa ibat-ibang panig ng Pilipinas, nagresurface sa social media ang usapin ng isang quote-unquote "development" project sa Cebu, The Rise at Monte Raza's, a luxury condominium carved out of a mountainside. Sa kabila ng pagtutol ng mga residente at mga environmental groups sa pagtatayo ng proyektong ito, given the history of calamity in the area, nakuha pa rin ito ang lahat ng permits mula sa gobyerno at tinuloy parin ang construction nito. Ilan pa ba ang mapanirang proyekto ang lumusot o pinalusot ng DNR at ng malakanyang mismo? Matutungangan na lang ba tayo? Matutungangan na lang ba ulit ang malakanyang tulad noong sumambulat ang iskandalo ng flood control projects? Ngayon, matapos ang Tino at Uwan. Pinupuna ng mga tao ang mga nagtulak sa pagtatayo ng condominium tulad ng celebrity engineer na si Slater Young, isa sa mga nagreassure sa publiko na hindi nito maaapektuhan ang kapaligiran. Muli namang umalma ang mga residente sa paligid ng Monte Raza's dahil sa hagupit ng bagyo at hindi ng baha. At iimbestigahan raw ng DNR at DPWH ang proyektong ito, pero ang tanong ng kabataan at ng taong bayan. Bakit ngayon lang, Mr. Speaker, kung kailan agrobyado na ang mga tao? This is too little, too late. Madaling magalit kay Slater Young, pero ang problema na ito, tulad ng flood control, ay hindi umuugat sa iilang engineer o indibidwal lamang, kundi ang pangkabuo ang sistema. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa ko mambabatas, hindi lamang mga peking development projects tulad ng The Rise at Monte Raza's ang talamak sa mga kabundukan ng ating bansa. Ang pangunahing, humakalbo, at pumapatag sa ating mga bundok ang mapinsalang pagmimina o destructive mining. Mr. Speaker, sa unang walong buwan pa lamang ng pagkaupo ni President Marcos Jr., ay walong mining permits ang inaprubahan sa ibat-ibang bahagi ng ating bansa. Sa kasalukuyan, nasa 790 ang approved and registered mining permits, kabilang ang exploration permit na iginawad sa Woggle Mining Corporation na nanghihimasok sa 3,100 hectares ng lupain sa Dupaks del Norte, Nueva Vizcaya, isa sa mga tinamaan ng Uwan para sa exploration ng gold and copper deposits doon. Tulad ng The Rise, tinututulan din ng mga residente ng Dupaks del Norte ang paghihimasok na ng mga korporasyong ito. Nagtayo pa sila ng barikada, nagprotesta, nanawagan, ipamana, wag ipamina. Ano ang tugon ng gobyerno, Mr. Speaker? Marahas na binuwag ang mga barikada at balak pang ituloy ang paghihimasok ng mining company. Kung ganoon, kailan pakikinggan ang mga hinahing ng mga residente? Kung kailan bumabagyo ulit at lunod na sila sa baha? At saka lang babawiin ang permit ng minahan at iimbestigahan kuno ang pinsala ng komunidad? Again, too little, too late. But maybe it's not about just being too slow. Maybe as we've seen, this is by design. Mr. Speaker, my good colleagues, I have discussed extensively in previous speeches about corruption in our government, but it begs repeating over and over again. May pandarambong sa pamahalaan at pandarambong sa kalikasan at ang ninanakaw sa kaban ng bayan ang ginagamit para ipamuhunan sa mga proyektong pinagsasamantalahan ang ating lupa, ang ating ilang bayan. Sa ganitong sistema ang lugi ang taong bayan. Madalas na sinisisi ang karaniwang tao pa nga eh, kesyo, quote-unquote, bakit kasi last minute na lumilikas bago bagyo? O di kaya, quote-unquote, bakit kasi sa flood plain gumawa ng tirahan? Takaw sa kunha, quote-unquote, raw ang mga taong ito. Mawalanggalang lang po, pero ang tunay na takaw sa kunha ay ang matatakaw sa yaman ng bayan, ang mga negosyong pinagkakitaan, ang pinsala sa kalikasan, at ang mga nasa gobyernong kakuntshaba nila gumaganan siya rin. Ang problema rin, hindi lang nakawan, ang problema ay ang sistema na ginagamit ang gobyerno para mapagpayaman ang iilan. Ito ang burukratang kapitalismo, Mr. Speaker. Hindi naman kasi natural, or natural, quote-unquote, ang disasters, dahil ang pinsalang dala ng mga bagyo at lindol, dinudulot, at pinapalala ng hindi makalikasang mga polisiya, korapsyon, at pandarambong. Inaargi na, natural, o normal lang daw ang sakuna at dinadakila ang Filipino resilience para masanay tayo sa ghost and substandard flood control projects, sa kawalan ng nature-based and scientific solutions, habang binubolsa ng iilan ang kaban ng bayan. Kailangan din nating sabihin, Mr. Speaker, na walang normal o natural sa paglala ng mga bagyo na dulot ng krisis pang klima o climate crisis. Dahil sa tuloy-tuloy at pataas ng pataas na carbon dioxide emissions at patuloy na pagilag sa pananagutan ng mga polluters, gaya ng mga dambohalang korporasyon sa langis at sa langis at krudo, naglalaho ang anumang hangarin namin para sa isang mundo na rito pa, nakabubuhay pa, sa susunod na limampung taon. Sunod-suod, sunod-sunod ang pagkakait sa ate ng hustisya. Kahit may International Court of Justice opinion na nagsasabing may obligasyon ang mga bansa na iwasan at bawasan ang mga effects ng climate change. Bigo pa rin ang pagkakaroon ng Global Plastic Treaty na sasagot sa pandaigdigang plastic pollution. May kabiguhan din na ilimita to 1.5 degrees Celsius ang global warming. To quote the UN Secretary General of the past five days, no? That is a moral failure and a deadly negligence. Mr. Speaker, mga kapwa ko mambabatas, ngayong National Environmental Awareness Month, hindi na lamang kamalayan ang kailangan sa usapin ng kalikasan at kapaligiran. Ang kailangan natin ngayon ay paniningil at pananagutan. It's been more than 100 days since the expose of rampant corruption in government, and years since we've called for climate accountability, and how many have been held accountable? Zero pa rin po. Hindi lang ito mga lumero ang usapin ng korapsyon, ang pandarambong sa pamahalaan, at kalikasan ay usapin ng buhay at kamatayan. Mula rito, muli ipinagpapanawagan ng representasyong ito ang mga sumusunod. Una, hinakailangan na nating ibasura ang Mining Act of 1995, at si Isabatas ang isang People's Mining Act para hindi namapinsala at nakataon sa kita ang minahan. Sa halip na makapagpatayo ng sustainable mining industry kung saan nakapanguna ang interes ng mamamayan, hindi ang iilan lang. Ipamana ang mga bundok at mahahalagang anyo ng lupa, at wag basta-bastang ipamina. Dagdag pa magpatupad ng People's Green New Deal, ng Climate Accountability Bill, na nakatuon sa tunay na reforma sa lupa at pambansang industrialisasyon, and of course, climate accountability. Pangalawa, tugunan ang loss and damage na dulot ng sakuna mula sa pinakaugat pa lamang nito. Maglaan ng pondok para sa kompensasyon sa lahat ng viktema ng sakuna. Itigil ang mga mapangwasak na infrastructure projects at magsagawa ng nature-based solutions, scientifically-backed projects para mabawasan at ganap na maiwasan ang pinsala ng bagyo, baha, lindol, at iba pa. Panghuli, paulitin ko, lahat ng sangkot, lahat ng kurakot, dapat managot. Sa paparating na November 17, sa National Students' Day, as provided by law, babawiin ng mga kabataang estudyante ang lansangan. At sa November 30, araw ni Gatt Andres Bonifacio sisingilin ng taong bayan at pananagutin ang mga kawatan. Pareho ang mga mandarambong sa pamahalaan at mandarambong sa kalikasan, dahil ninanakaw lang nila hindi ang likasyaman lamang, kundi pati ang kinabukasan ng mga pag-asa ng bayan. I yield my remaining time for the floor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Coe. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Renee Coe to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Coe is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. The speech of Honorable Ko is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I wish to acknowledge, or allow, Honorable Sara Ilago of Gabriela Partelis to avail the privilege hour.
The Honorable Sara Jane Ilago of the Partelis Gabriela is recognized. May proceed?
Mister Speaker, dear colleagues, child rights advocates, at sa mga bata, maligayang pagbati ngayong National Children's Month. Every November, we come together to celebrate National Children's Month, a month dedicated to honoring every Filipino child. This month also reminds us of the state's obligation to fulfill, promote, and respect children's rights as we commemorate the adoption of the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child, a global commitment to which the Philippines is a state party. Ang pagpirmarito, Mister Speaker, ay hindi lang isang... hindi lang isang kasulatan, no? Kundi isang obligasyon at responsibilidad. Natiyakina ang bawat bata ay lumalaking ligtas, malusog, may edukasyon, at tunay na malaya. Yep, as we gather today, we are confronted by a painful truth. Many Filipino children are still left behind. They remain among the most vulnerable members of society, especially in times of disaster and crisis. This year's celebration comes at a time when crisis continue to worsen. The start of the National Children's Month was marked by typhoons that exposed children to severe danger. An average of twenty tropical cyclones hit the Philippines every year according to Pagasa. And based on news reports, the recent typhoon Uwan alone affected an estimated 470,000 children and has damaged over 1,800 classrooms in Luzon. Filipino children face the harsh realities of disasters, earthquakes, devastating floods, and typhoons that destroy homes, communities, and schools. This is worsened not only by development aggression and extractive mining that destroy our forests and environment, but also by corruption that drains billions meant to protect our communities from disasters. Billions of pesos intended for public works and flood control have been lost to ghost projects, overpriced contracts, and substandard or incomplete infrastructures. In poor communities, Mister Speaker, children are often the first to suffer. They lose their homes to demolitions in the name of development. They live through flooding and landslides which are worsened by corruption. They are displaced from ancestral lands militarized for mining and profit. Many end up in the streets, hungry and vulnerable, forced into child labor, exploitation, trafficking, or abuse. Isa rin sa mga nakakabahala at lumalalang anyo ng pang-aabuso sa mga bata sa Pilipinas ngayon ay ang madami pa ring kaso ng online sexual abuse at exploitation of children o osahe. Sa dami ng oras na ginugugol ng mga bata sa internet, lalo na sa mga pinakamahirap na mga komunidad, nagiging target sila ng online sexual abuse at iba pang uri ng online abuse at exploitation. Sa katunayan, hanggang ngayon ang Pilipinas ay isa sa mga global hotspot ng online sexual abuse at exploitation of children. Bukod pa rito, Mister Speaker, nakikita rin natin ang patuloy na pagtaas ng iba pang anyo ng paglabag sa karapatang pantao ng mga bata, kabilang ang pagiging biktima ng displacement at militarization, harassment, o maskipare tagging. Marami ang nawalan ng mga magulang dahil sa extrajudicial killings sa ilalim ng natagurian na gyera konta droga at gyera konta insurhensya. Para sa mga bata, ang sakuna, krisis, pang-aabuso, at karasan ay nagdudulot ng pagkawalan ng kanilang karapatan sa maayos na panirahan, karapatang makakain, karapatang makapaglaro, karapatang makapag-aral, at karapatang mabuhay ng ligtas at malayo sa anumang panganib. For many Filipino children, childhood is no longer about discovery or play. It has become about survival. That is why this National Children's Month, Mister Speaker, this month must serve as a call to action and for us to really stand collectively in upholding and defending the rights and welfare of every Filipino child. Dapat nating ipagtanggol ang mga karapatan ng mga bata, hindi lamang sa proteksyon, kundi pati na rin sa makabuluhan na pakikilahok. Ang karapatang makinig, ang karapatang makita, ang karapatang makibahagi, ang karapatan na magambag sa paghubog ng mundo at bayan na mahal nila. Hayaan nating maging paalala ang buwan ng mga bata para sa paglaban sa katiwalian, para sa ating paninindigan, para sa katarungan, para sa pagtatanggol ng karapatang pantao. Sama-sama tayong kumilos para sa kinabukasan ng susunod na salinlahi at para sa isang lipunan kung saan ang bawat bata ay nabubuhay ng may dignidad, ng ligtas, at tunay na malaya sa pang-aabuso. Hustisia para sa mga batang biktima ng korapsyon at kalamidad, tuloy ang laban para sa karapatan at kapakanan ng mga bata. Maraming salamat, at muli, pagbati sa National Children's Month.
Thank you, Honorable Ilago, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Sara Ilago to the Committee of Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Ilago is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The privilege hour is closed. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Marlesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim, namely, Ms. Sharifa Aini Inawat, Mr. Alizere Inawat, Mr. Angelo Roque Jr., Ms. Jeremy Clarin, Mr. Julius Pagalan, Mr. Reagan Saliganan, Mr. Marlo de los Reyes, Mr. Raleigh Pugoy, Ms. Sharifa Madshi Saliganan, Mr. Ramil Santa Cruz, Mr. Sharif Mohammed Ashraf Hasim, Ms. Maria Elisa Santa Cruz, Ms. Genie Angsang, Ms. Maria Estrillietta G. Lara, Ms. Azie May Lacopio.
To the guests of the Honorable Marlesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim of the Second District of Sambongga, Cebugay, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other business for today. I will move that we suspend session until the 12th of November, Wednesday, 3:00 PM.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Session is suspended until November 12 at 3:00 PM.